Saltzman? No, I'm sorry. Novick?
Very dramatic.
Brits?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Hales?
I just heard that the mayor is not able to attend today, so we will proceed, and I am the presiding officer. The purpose of the hearing is to consider the proposal for demolition. Commissioner Saltzman, did you have anything that you wanted to say before I outline them? So first, the city attorney will...
I should probably read the title first.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay.
Item 947, "Consider Proposal of Sarah Curtis on behalf of Ryan Buchanan for Demolition Review and the Bureau of Development Services staff and Portland Historic Landmarks Commission Recommendation of Approval for the Demolition of a Contributing Garage in the Lads Edition Historic District at 1609 Southeast 16th Avenue, LU 15-167566 DM."
So since this is a land use review, there are state regulations on how we conduct it, and we're going to go to the city attorney for those preliminary remarks.
Thank you, Commissioner Brits. So this is a Type 4 procedure, and...
Is your mic on?
I think it is. I'll get a little closer. So we're going to cobble together a procedure that I think does the job, because this is a little bit unusual. Prelimarily, though, this is an evidentiary hearing. This means interested parties may submit new evidence to the council in support of their arguments. We have a format that we're going to follow. We'll begin with a staff report by the Bureau of Development Services staff. That'll be approximately 10 minutes. Following staff report, the council will hear from interested persons in the following order. I don't know if we really have an appellant here, so that may not be who we hear from, but I'll call that the applicant will go first. Then we'll have supporters of the applicant, any opponents of the application. Following that, there will be an opportunity for rebuttal by the applicant, then council discussion, and then any future scheduling if that is necessary. For evidentiary hearings, there are several guidelines for those who will be addressing council today. Any letters or documents you wish to become part of the record should be given to the council clerk after you testify. Similarly, the original or a copy of any slides, photographs, drawings, maps, videos, or other items you show to the council during your testimony, including any presentations, should be given to the council clerk to make sure they become part of the record. Any testimony, arguments, or evidence you present should be directed to the applicable approval criteria to this review. Staff will identify what those are. Or other criteria in the city's plan, comprehensive plan, or zoning code that you believe may apply to the decision. Staff will identify the applicable criteria as part of their staff report. I mentioned it twice. They don't have to do it twice. Any issues you raise must be raised clearly and with enough specificity to give the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue. If you do not raise the issues with sufficient specificity, you will be precluded from appealing to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. If there are any constitutional challenges in this matter, the applicant who fails to raise them with enough specificity to allow the council to respond will be precluded from bringing in action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, it's probably appropriate to talk about any potential conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts that the council wishes to identify or declare.
Does anybody have any conflicts of interest? Any ex parte contacts? Thank you.
And I'll ask if there have been any site visits that anyone has made?
Any phone visits? No.
Okay, I think we're ready to proceed with the staff report then.
Thank you very much. So we'll have the staff report for 10 minutes, followed by the applicant for 10 minutes. Supporters of the applicant will have three minutes. If there is a principal opponent, they'll have 15 minutes. And supporters of the opposition will have three minutes each, and then rebuttal for five minutes by the applicant, followed by council discussion. Hillary Adams.
Hello. This is a Type 4 demolition review. I'm just going to go a little bit through the procedure leading up to this point. We had a pre-application conference in March 2015. That is a requirement for the Type 4. We also issued public notice of the Historic Landmarks Commission Advisory Meeting and the City Council hearing posted the property for both those dates. Held the Historic Landmarks Commission meeting in July. I issued a staff report to all of you, and now we're here. A little bit of background on the demolition review. It was instituted in 2004 through historic resource code improvements. That was a comprehensive overhaul of the historic resources code, making improvements to zoning code and building code incentives and strengthening this sort of review. We have had three prior Type 4 demolition review hearings, and I'll just go through those a little bit. In 2010, there was the Kieranin Building, also known as the Dirty Duck. City Council approved demolition of that building, which is shown in the lower left. The proposed replacement was then a three-story blanchet house of hospitality. It later became a four-story blanchet house. But City Council noted that the proposed facility encompassing low-income housing, a soup kitchen, and other related services was the highest and best use of the site, and found that, on balance, the approval criteria was met. Last December in 2014, we heard the Buck Prager Building proposed demolition. City Council denied that application. They were proposing to demolish a three-story historic resource on an eighth block in the Alphabet Historic District and proposed a four- to six-story market-rate apartment building in its place. City Council noted that a new market-rate apartment building did not provide a significant public benefit to compensate for the loss of the historic resource, and, on balance, the approval criteria was not met. Earlier this year, we discussed demolition of Washington Park reservoirs, specifically Reservoir 3, 4, and the Ware Building, to be replaced with a new underground reservoir, surface reflecting pools, and restoration of remaining contributing resources. City Council approved that request, recognizing the impact of geological forces on the historic resources, and the city's responsibility to provide the basic service of clean drinking water, and that the mitigation proposed was comparable to the magnitude of the loss. On balance, the approval criteria was met. So the purpose of demolition review is that it recognizes that historic resources are irreplaceable assets that preserve our heritage, beautify the city, enhance civic identity, and promote economic vitality. The approval criteria for demolition review are to establish that either denial of the demolition permit would effectively deprive the owner of all reasonable economic use of the site, or that demolition of the resource has been evaluated against and, on balance, has been found supportive of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and any relevant area plans, considering the merits of the demolition, the merits of the proposed replacement development, the effect demolition would have on the area's desired character, the effect that the proposed replacement development would have on the area's desired character, and the merits of preserving the resource, as well as any mitigation. The zoning for the subject property is R5, it's Presidential 5,000. The site itself is about 10,000 square feet. It's in the Lads Edition Historic District. Here is an aerial view of the site. It's just about a block south of Hawthorne. This is a figure ground of that northern portion of Lads Edition. You can see there's a pattern of alleys with rear garages. The garage in question is shown on this property, sort of in the center of the block, and it was accessed from Southeast 16th Avenue through the front yard. Here are some site photos. The two on the right and the one on the bottom are from about the time that the property owners purchased the property. In 2012, on the lower left there, you can see the red line that is the sort of parapet on the garage. April 2014, I went to the site and discovered that the garage had been removed. So this is next post facto demolition review. The garage has already been demolished. Here are some site photos from this year. You can see that the property owners have done extensive renovation work on the house A little bit about Lads Edition Historic District. It was nominated to the National Register for the following criteria: association with events that made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history, association with significant persons in our past, an embodiment of the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction or works by master. Lads Edition is pretty well-known for its layout, its planning with diagonal streets and alleys that feature those rear garages. Here are some additional photos of the garage. The two on the left I pulled from Google Street View. You can see in April 2009 and July 2011 it was still standing. 2012, I believe, the lower picture is from the time of purchase of the property in about February, and then above that is May 2012 when the garage was collapsed. There was a review that BDS did for renovation of the house that included relocation of the garage, including incorporating that collapsed roof into a new garage that would be relocated to the alley side, basically showing in the approximate area where this blue square is. But this is a site plan for the proposed replacement garage, which includes an ADU above it at about 400 square feet. These are some images of options for the potential garage and ADU that were shown to the Historic Landmarks Commission on July 27. And this is the most recent design that is expected to be issued for the follow-up review. The Landmarks Commission suggested that they reduce the scale a little bit and add some windows to the east facade, which is a street-facing facade, and those are those three windows shown at the garage level. The applicant response to the approval criteria, I'll just read these. "The proposed demolition of the detached garage is part of the rehabilitation of the property, which was in disrepair prior to the current owner's purchase. The new garage with the ADU above will respect the character of the neighborhood by relating in material scale and architectural detailing to both the main residence and the surrounding neighborhood. The location of the proposed garage and ADU is consistent with the pattern of garages in Lads Edition, and the new ADU will provide a relatively affordable rental unit and a desirable close-in neighborhood, and the new ADU will be energy-efficient." Staff findings are that the new ADU will provide a relatively affordable housing option in a desirable close-in neighborhood with few such options. We agree with the applicant there. "The new ADU also provides the opportunity for the potential use of this short-term rental within the historic district, thus serving as an economic development tool for promotion of the district. That's not part of their intent, but I acknowledge that that was a possibility." "The garage, when purchased, was in poor condition, described by the inspector. A leaning over, a later letter from the inspector indicated the garage would not survive relocation to the alley, as was requested by the city. And when considering the merits of the structure to be preserved, staff considered the following: the poor condition, the garage was built 14 years after the house, it was a utilitarian accessory structure, modest design, and its relatively improper location on the site when compared to the rest of the district and the district's desired character, which required access across the front yard, is generally inconsistent with Lads Edition. The proposed garage and ADU respects the historic character of the site and reinforces the district's alley garage character, and construction of a new garage and ADU may have been possible without demolition." "The Landmarks Commission recommendations, on balance, the merits of the replacement with a new compatible ADU and garage better meets the goals of the comprehensive plan. The large lot size of the subject property allows for a new structure to contain an ADU, provided it is appropriately scaled, without compromising the historic residence or the district, but noted that this would not necessarily be the case throughout this or other districts." Can I have one more minute, please? "Approving the demolition solely on the condition of the building rather than on the merits as a whole condones demolition by neglect. However, its deteriorated condition and the impracticality of moving the garage were considered within the context of the entire proposal, including the accessory nature of the building and its relative impact on the district compared to that of a primary residence or commercial building." They noted, again, that the proposed design as presented on July 27 was too large in scale and recommended changes to the scale and adding the windows. So in summary, I believe that the goals and policies noted on the top half of this slide are met. Goal 3, Neighborhoods, Policy 3.4 under Goal 3 was found to not be met. However, when considered against the language of the actual goal, we found, on balance, that this goal was met. And then the goals and policies at the bottom of the slide were found not to be applicable. Therefore, on balance, I believe that the approval criteria are met. And that's it.
I have two questions, and thank you for an outstanding, as always, staff presentation. The first is, what was the miscommunication between the applicant and the city that led to the demolition prior to this issue being resolved?
That is hard to pinpoint. In 2012, there was a BDS administrative decision that included approval of renovation of the house. It also suggested moving the garage to the alley and incorporating the roof as part of I believe that that was the applicant's intent, but perhaps the contractor misunderstood, and the garage was removed.
Okay. And just generally, since your opening presentation highlighted how rare these demolition reviews are, and now this is the first one we've had that had an ex post facto component. So I am likely to be persuaded by the staff recommendation here, but what remedy would we have in a case like this where the demolition has already occurred if we were otherwise unpersuaded that it was consistent with the law?
Well, we could require them to reconstruct the garage, and perhaps assess liens if they did not.
We'd never actually, that's never, we don't have any precedent for that.
Right.
Okay. I'm just curious, because it's odd that the ex post facto nature of this is odd, and therefore, I guess at some point, and not today, I'd like to get the BDS's view about whether this particular component of demolition review should be subject to a Type 4 or Type 3. I have my own concerns about whether this fits within Type 4, and I think either through recap or whatever process, I would welcome your counsel on that question at some point.
It's definitely been under discussion among BDS staff and a little bit with BPS staff, but there is no formal directive to look at that yet.
Do we need a formal directive, or can we just have the commissioner in charge say that it's an issue of concern to the council?
Good to be here. Do we note that?
I think we just got a formal directive, so that's on the record, but I, again, without prejudging it...
BDS can only do so much. I mean, we implement the code, so that's what we're doing here, is implementing the code.
All I would say is, let's put it in the queue, and then, speaking for myself, I would be interested in knowing whether there's a different procedure that you would recommend. It doesn't quite seem to me to fit within Type 4, but I'm just one person. So thank you.
Other questions for staff? Thank you. Now we'll hear from the applicant for 10 minutes, please.
For the record, my name is Sarah Stoffer-Curtis with Stillreeds Law Firm. I'd like to, first of all, introduce the property owners who are here with me today, Ryan and Shannon Buchanan. And I will be brief. I think there's just a few messages that I'd like to bring to you after Hillary did such a good job outlining, I think, the major contours of this issue and why we're here before you today. First, I think that this is really a story of a transformation of a property that had become an eyesore in the Lads Edition neighborhood. If you take a look at Exhibit A that we provided in the applicant's packet, you can see a number of before pictures of the property. This is a property that had fallen into disrepair. It was the subject of multiple nuisance complaints from neighbors for debris, and there was an abandoned swimming pool in the large lot that was next to the house that was falling apart. And the Buchanan's, over the last several years, have come in and done what I believe to be a magnificent job of rehabbing this property. As the inspection report noted, when they bought this property, the garage that's the subject of this application was in extremely poor condition. It was leaning over, it was, you know, was essentially in need of replacement. Just to put a point on that point, I think, the after pictures, if you look at Exhibit C of our packet, you can see really what's been done with this property. And I think it's not only there have been a lot of investment there, but it's investment that was really in keeping with the historic character of the neighborhood. The restoration of the home was fully permitted, and the city found it all to be consistent with Lads Edition. The second point is that this is a situation where there were some mistakes made in the process of this rehabilitation. There was a May 2012 letter from the city to the applicant's contractor noting that demolishing the garage would require demolition review. However, there was confusion about what exactly demolition meant. And when the garage collapsed and was sitting on the property and the contractor hauled it off, you know, it was demolished, and there wasn't an understanding by the property owners or the contractors at that time that any review was required for something that had collapsed. Now, I can tell you that if we could wind back the clock and relocate that roof to another location and not go through a Type 4 process that involved appearing before the city council in order to rebuild this garage, that would be something that the property owners would have loved to do. Unfortunately, by the time that this error was discovered, the roof and the other components of the garage were no longer available to be relocated to another part in the property.
Counsel, can I just raise a question on that point? Because one of the examples that was in the earlier presentation around the so-called Dirty Duck Building?
Sure.
Since we've had so far... Since we've had so few of these, I actually remember them. And one of the concerns that was raised in connection with that demolition was what we call demolition by neglect. And the idea was, you should not reward a property owner for allowing a property to reach a point and a condition that demolition is the only option as a way of getting around, you know, historic review. And what assurances can you give us in this proceeding that there was no demolition by neglect?
Well, I can tell you that if, as someone who practices in the land use arena regularly, Type IV is not a way around anything. And demolition by neglect, given just the fees alone to proceed with some, you know, application process of misnature, I don't think there's any incentive for that type of, that type of action. In this circumstance, there were some mistakes that were made, but demolition by neglect is, was not the case.
You'll get to testify in just a minute. Thank you.
My final point, and I'd be happy to take other questions, but I think that the proposal, the replacement garage proposal is a good one. And it's one that has not only have the property owners taken recommendations from staff and the Landmarks Commission and gone through multiple redesigns in order to try to develop a design that is, that everyone agrees is compatible with the neighborhood and fits in with the site and the house, but is something that folks can feel good about and really is consistent with what the comprehensive plan policies would support in this circumstance. So with that, I would simply request that you approve the application, consistent with the recommendations of staff and the Landmarks Commission, and unless there are questions, I'll reserve my remaining time for rebuttal.
If you want to bring your clients up to use some of the, you'll have another five minutes at the end anyway, so if you wanted to give them some more opportunity to testify now, or else they can have three minutes each.
Just that, to underscore the point that it was in very bad shape when they bought it. Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you. So now we have supporters of the application. Do we have anybody signed up?
I have about one name on the list, Kirk Renzenetta.
And anybody else who wants to come and testify in support of the application, including if you wanted to get on the record, the reasons for the state it was in?
Hello, Counsel. My name is Kirk Renzenetta, and I'm on the Portland Historic Landmarks Commission and located at 111 Southwest Columbia in Portland. I'm here to provide some testimony, just to confirm a lot of the things that staff said in their staff report in terms of what the overall feeling was of the Landmarks Commission in this particular case. Granted, I think there were some just very kind of awkward occurrences that kind of put us in this position to begin with, and I think after the review and applying the criteria, the Landmarks found that, on balance, there were several things about the application that warranted its approval. We did have some caveats in terms of what the replacement billing we would like to see in that new construction, in terms of the overall scale of the redesign, those revised drawings that you saw were not presented to the Landmarks Commission, so we didn't really have an opportunity to provide, you know, additional comment on that. The only other thing I would like to add, in terms of what the Landmarks Commission would like to see, is just to make sure that the applicant continue to work with BDS, as well as hands Land Use Committee, the Historic Resources Subcommittee more specifically, on the redesign to ensure that the new ADU is appropriately scaled for Lads Edition, and not only from being visible from the street, but also from the neighboring properties as well. Ancillary structures within Lads Edition are typically smaller, and that's just kind of the relationship that you see throughout the neighborhood, is you see the main house and then a garage or outbuilding. So those are my only comments really to share. I'm open to taking questions as well, Counsel.
The condition that you've just mentioned is not part of the tentative staff recommendation, so you're suggesting that we add a condition about continued consultation on the design for the ADU?
That is, yeah, that is one of our recommendations. In the letter, just wanted to make sure, too, that you'd received our letter dated August 26, 2015.
Isn't the historic design review required?
It is from a lower level of staff review. I think it's a Type II, is that correct? Type I? It's a Type I review.
So you would like to see the ADU come back to the Historical Landmarks Commission?
I'm not sure if we even made that recommendation necessarily, just that we would encourage the applicant to continue to work with the Neighborhood Historic Resources Subcommittee.
On the design?
On the design, correct.
With the neighborhood rather than with the commission?
And obviously with staff, with BDS staff.
Seeing a lot of nodding back there, so this might be a friendly condition, but we'll take that up.
And has the commission taken up the issue of, should there be a lesser level of review for accessory structures?
There has been some discussion of it, and there's been some discussion of the pros and cons, and I was kind of on the minority, and I think some of the pros are certainly that, you know, should the city council be reviewing a Type IV application for a garage, for instance, or should we develop some kind of process so that the Landmarks Commission can kind of take a little bit more responsibility for those types of reviews with appeals obviously being taken to city council? The, perhaps the con would be just that it is a bit of an onerous process to go through the Type IV review, therefore that's a discouragement from demolishing an ancillary structure within a historic district or landmark. So there's a bit of a balance. And I think, you know, given the fact that this is the first one in, you know, 13 years, that's something that also kind of fits into that consideration.
So the commission doesn't have a specific recommendation one way or the other at this time?
I mean, it's kind of iffy. I think we would appreciate being, having the opportunity to just kind of talk as a commission and to kind of give the council a more solid recommendation in terms of, you know, if we do go forward with some kind of a code change or process that, you know, the feedback we provide to you is straightforward and it comes from, you know, a majority, if not, you know, the consensus of the commission.
So perhaps you could have some more discussion, and in your next annual report, make a more formal recommendation on that. We certainly don't need an answer today.
Absolutely, yeah. That is something, yep.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak in support of the application? Seeing none, opponents of the application? Does anybody want to speak in opposition? Did anybody sign up? Carla?
No one else signed up for that.
I don't see anybody signing up in opposition. So then we move to rebuttal. There isn't anything to rebut, but would you like to say anything else?
Madam President? Since there's no, nothing to rebut, would you entertain a motion?
Well, I just need to ask the applicant, is there anything else that you want to
In response to the comment about redoing the design in response to the Landmarks Commission's recommendations, over the last month, we have been working with staff to refine the designs of the ADU in response to those, the Landmarks Commission's and staff's recommendations. And as of yesterday, we have submitted final designs in response to that, so I think that those at least have been responded to already.
And the question of going to the Houston Avenue Neighborhood Association Subcommittee?
So early on in the process, we did reach out to the Hand Land Use Subcommittee and asking for recommendations on the proposal generally, which we received, you know, corresponded with folks, representatives in the Neighborhood Association. But we were not directed by the Landmarks Commission to coordinate with that Subcommittee over the last month. However, I don't, I don't think there's any objection to providing information. I just will note that we have already done redesigns two or three times in response to feedback, and it is very expensive for the applicant to continue to go back to the architect every time to respond to one, yet one more, you know, change to the design.
The council doesn't generally designate our authority to neighborhood volunteer groups.
Right, right.
I think, knowing the reasonableness of the Hand neighbors, I think they would appreciate you going back with the final design.
Right.
If you're willing to do that. Yep, thank you.
And the way I would describe my interest in this is that you just make a good faith effort. We're not, as Commissioner, as the President Fritz announced, that we're not delegating to someone authority, but just a good faith effort. And it doesn't seem like that's a problem. So I don't even actually, I intend to make a motion, but I don't intend to even have that as a condition unless the President thinks it's necessary. So with that, Madam President, would you entertain a motion?
Unless there's anything further from staff?
I move to...
Why do you have one more thing, Commissioner? I appreciate your willingness to, if it's a long mission.
Eagerness here.
I just wanted to clarify that after this hearing, there will be a Type I Notice of Proposal going out for the replacement project in hand, as well as any neighbors would have the opportunity to comment on that.
And that could get, only get appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, right?
Right.
Great, thank you. Now, Commissioner, I think your motion is in order.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm going to be out of order. Before we hear any motions and before the record is formally closed, one thing I did not indicate at the outset, and that was my error, is that any party does have the opportunity to request that the record be held open. I don't think that's going to be an issue, but it does need to be said. So before we go forward, that's been said.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything else to say before we move to a motion? Thank you.
I certainly don't want to move this forward in any way to deprive anyone of a basic right, but I, with my colleague's approval dispensation, I move that we adopt the staff recommendations and findings.
Is there a second?
Second.
And question for the city attorney, do you need any time to do findings?
If we're going to call this a final vote, which is a wholesale adoption of the staff recommendation with no changes, we can consider it a final vote. It doesn't have to come back.
And is that acceptable to staff? Okay, very good. And Chief Colerile?
Feltzman?
Well, thanks to everybody. This does seem a little Kafkaesque, I guess, but glad to approve this and let the ADU and new garage get built. Aye.
Novick?
I appreciate the fact that the applicant is going to continue to talk to the Hand. Aye.
This is a unique circumstance, and the reason we've had this hearing and asked some questions is to make the exception that we're carving out as narrow as possible, because I think you've persuaded me that this is a unique circumstance based on some miscommunication unforeseen, and therefore I'm convinced that we can proceed without setting a precedent that someone who is less attentive than the applicant here for the, to the historic district and the code might be in the future. I will add that while it's not germane to our decision, I have to say, I think you've done a marvelous job renovating this building. While I haven't, this is one of the few proceedings we have at council where we're supposed to announce at the beginning and celebrate the fact that we haven't done our homework in advance of these proceedings. In other words, we're not allowed to go to the site, we're not allowed to talk to anyone about it because it's the rules of land use. But since we have the exhibits, it is a very attractive, in my opinion, a very attractive renovation, and thank you for your investment. Aye.
Fritz?
Congratulations in moving into one of the city's premier historic neighborhoods, and indeed for doing the renovations. And thanks to the applicant and your attorney for a good presentation. I very much appreciate land use reviews. There is a set way of doing things, and although it may seem a little slow and archaic, it means that everybody has an opportunity to be heard, and that if anybody is in the future dismayed by said garage, they will have known they had their opportunity to come here and object. So thank you very much, and thanks also to Hillary Adam and Tim Herring for your staff work, for the city attorney for pitching the short notice here when we discovered that the mayor was not able to be here, and I'm very pleased about that.
With that, we are adjourned.